I'd like to call this June 8 regular council meeting and work session to order. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence? And let's remember all of those who passed away over the month, and also let's remember former Councilman Pat Sabatini and former mayor, who's very sick right now, and we're all praying that he pulls through. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all call, please. Mr. Gerard.
Present.
Mr. Devine.
Here.
Mr. Peasant.
Here.
Mrs. Cullen.
Here.
Mrs. Robrikus is here.
Mr. Foreman.
Present.
Mr. Troce is on vacation. Mr. De Jesus.
Here.
Okay, before we get started, I want to make sure we have anybody chief out there for public participation.
Those are it.
For that end, public participation. Before we get started, I'd like to talk about a couple of things. One is the march that took place in town on Saturday. I think it was unbelievable, really, when you put it to words, how organized it was, and how great everybody was, and how friendly everybody was, and everybody marched for a great cause, and I couldn't be prouder, and I told Morris and, I forgot her name.
Cora.
Cora, how proud I was of them for putting this march together, and for organizing it, and for everybody who's worried about so much trouble, because you see, what you see on TV, but they guaranteed that this thing would run the way it ran, and they should be complimented, they really should, so they did an outstanding job, and like I said, I couldn't be prouder of the two of them to organize this march. Also, the chief, and I just got to compliment you, I know people don't realize how much time you've put in to making this a success, and it took a lot of effort on your part with all the other police departments and the things that you had to organize to put this together, and I sat in, along with the mayor, on many briefings and many meetings leading up to the day of the march, and I was really impressed, and I'll tell you, we're lucky to have you in Bristol, so I just want you to know that. Ray, do you want to say anything on the?
Yes. I want to echo the same thoughts that you just put out there. Over the last four years, I've had the opportunity to work with Chief Henry pretty close, and by the way, I want to thank this council for hiring Chief Henry. He brings a degree of, the highest degree of professionalism in the management of this department. On a daily basis, he juggles the needs of the community with the abilities of our officers. He has revised, updated, and added new procedures current with many of today's standards. He has ensured that our officers are getting the training that meets the needs of today's patrol officers and our sergeants. Last week, Chief Henry asked us to put our trust in him to be the point person for Bristol Borough in coordinating with the peaceful organizers of this unity march, and earning their trust as well as ours. On behalf of all the residents of Bristol Borough, I want to commend Chief Henry for his high degree of professionalism, his ability to recognize the needs and the wants of the people, and the work to ensure that all parties are satisfied. While doing this, he coordinated a massive implementation plan to ensure the safety of all of our residents and participants. Along with that, you know, since about 2002, we instituted community policing, and I firmly believe today that we are in a position that a lot of other police departments aren't because we did that. And that police, community policing, all started out with a lot of, with this council, with bicycle patrols, we have, our police are in the schools, and not just as resource officers, they go to the summer programs, they're in the schools with their programs, fish with a cop, shop with a cop, excuse me, so our, our police officers are very active within the community. And I agree with Ralph, I want to thank the domain organizers, at least the ones that we worked with, Morris, Derry III, and Cora Leon, for willing to sit down, which they didn't have to do, willing to sit down and work with us, and then, and putting the trust that we had in Chief Henry, and the outstanding job that he did, and our police department. We're very fortunate to have some of the officers that we have in our department, because these organizers had reached out to one or two of our officers, and because we have that good relationship, I think that's one of the reasons everything went so well. So, I want to thank everybody, right down to the secretaries and the streets and highway department, for working along with us to make this a success. And black lives and all lives do matter. Thank you.
I know when we met, Chief, downstairs with Cora and Morris, and the three of us, I left that meeting very confident that night that everything was going to be fine. I mean, they, like I said, I couldn't be involved in something that went as good as we could plan for, but I think you had a lot to do with that.
If I could just, yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments, and most importantly, just, first off, start with a very sincere apology, that our profession is the catalyst that brought this all about today, and it's kind of embarrassing that this situation can still occur in this country. We really applaud that the organizers of the march for doing what they did, and also, you know, as you talked about, some of the people you hired, they right away reached out to frontline police officers. Chuck Palmer, I'll put it right out there, made the first contact and put us in touch with these people, and they were willing to meet. Following that, the support of the mayor and council, and yourself personally with the logistics aspect of helping it out, our neighboring police departments, Bristol Township, Tully Town, Falls, Middletown, Ben Salem, Lower South, Lower Makefield, we couldn't have done it without them. Every officer stepped up that day in the department, everybody came in, and without Pat and I knew they had to be there that day for the community, and as they always are, they're there for the community, and we have that, like you guys all put out, we have that special relationship with the people in this neighborhood, because we need them. But most importantly, I really want to thank the people of Bristol Borough for allowing us to have a very important symbol, and pretty much show the example to the rest of the country the way it should be done. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
I just wanted to make a small therapy on this now, since this is the topic I figure, I'm guessing most of us have something to say about that. Up to you. Whatever it is, Mr. President. So, I obviously wanted to reiterate all the sentiments, you know, Councilman Devine and I had a different look into this whole march, and first, I would like to say, you're right, that Cora and Morris were fantastic, but they were just the face here of a lot of really inspired and inspiring young people. Not that Cora and Morris are not young-ish, but I'm talking, you know, early twenties, mid twenties, and they were multi-racial, diverse, and, and really just, they were moved to act, and I think it was very important that we not only gave a platform for that, but supported that platform, respected the First Amendment, and supported that platform. And I think it went a long way to, to really bridge the gap, you know, that I think that does exist in, not just Bristol Borough, but this entire country. And I said to Cora, you know, I think maybe the most important thing out of the result of this march is that I, I think that some minds were changed as a result of it, and I think that's really the only direction that we can hope to go in, is that, you know, in some way, shape, or form, I think everyone that comes from some position of privilege has to have some sort of shift to understand that real changes need to happen. And then, as I've said before, a little bit of a different insight, in the sense that we were at this planning meeting, also a little different insight into how spectacular Chief Henry really is. Sitting in a room, as I said, of young, diverse, upset, a group of people, but also a very respectful group of people. Sorry. Chief Henry did not mince his words, he was very clear that the safety of Bristol Borough was first and foremost, and that their safety was first and foremost, and within two minutes, and I know he had already met with them a few times, but within two minutes, it was abundantly clear that everyone in that room trusted what Chief Henry was saying, and not by his words, but by, I think, just how obviously sincere he was. And as I said to every officer, I think it was a great day for Bristol Borough in many, many ways, it was a great day to show our deeply rooted diversity, and our cultural diversity that has been part of us forever, but also to show that we have got a first-class police department, and I think that's in no small part due to Chief Henry, so I just wanted to reiterate all those things. Thank you.
Lorraine.
I just want to say that it meant so much to walk side by side with police officers. I think that that, you know, shows their respect, and we have some great police officers here, and we can't forget that. Black Lives Matter, and police officers are good, there's good police officers in this world also. That's it.
Anybody else? Okay, Michael.
I just wanted to, again, thank the chief, you know, the Borough Police Department. I also thought it was amazing how the other municipalities came in and you all worked together. Most importantly, the organizers, Morris and Cora, they just really, it was just the energy, when you first went there, there was just a very peaceful energy. And once again, I think it showed really important that Bristol Borough as a community is unified, you know, that was just really, really great, and again, the residents down from the marching to handing out popsicles, you know, cold rags, water throughout the march, as well as the organizers and, and the people that donated. And one of the things I thought that was also very nice is I got to meet the great, great niece of Harry Tomlin, which was amazing, but, you know, when that was all over done and everybody was saying goodbye, the organizers made sure and stressed that, can you please make sure that you leave this park the way you found it? And everybody, there were trash bags being pushed, not that that's, but, I mean, there we go, they thought about everything, so thank you, and I think it was a great event. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, to go through our work session, I usually go to everybody. Dave, let's start with you. Do you have anything?
I can give a small list of things I'd like to see done in North Ward, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Greg, do you have anything?
I don't.
Lorraine?
I just want to say that Mill Run is on the move, and I've been saying this for years, but they are really moving quickly, and I'm hoping that within a few months, there will be a partial opening. And I'll put it out there when I, when, Greg and I'll put it out there when we think it's going to be, but we don't want to say yet, but we're really happy with, with everything that's going on there, so.
Go ahead.
Ralph, I'm sorry, there was one thing that I, that's okay. Can we clarify what the, at least our plan of action is in discussing the festivals? There was some, you know, banter on Facebook back and forth that, that what were responsible for canceling, and what the organizations themselves are responsible for canceling, and what?
Bless. You want me to discuss it now, or?
It doesn't matter, whenever you think is better.
So, let me just get into the festivals. The Borough Council has not canceled one festival, and we will not cancel a festival. We left it up to every organization to make their own decision. The governor, when we were shut down, there apparently couldn't be any festivals, that's why they canceled Kelpic Day was the first one. And then, I spoke to Carmen Ruiz, and they canceled Puerto Rican Day, which I announced at our last, at our last meeting. The next event coming is African American Day in August, I haven't heard anything from them, I think Merle's going to reach out to find out what's going on. I would say 99% it's going to be canceled. I got a call that they did cancel Bristol Day now, in October, so Bristol Day is canceled. I would say almost 99% that the St. Anne Church Carnival probably will be canceled, and I could almost say that the duop will probably be canceled. The sad part is, we're going to, 2020 is probably never, I feel like it never existed with all, everything that's going on, but, you know, Italian Day is still on, they haven't canceled that yet, which is in September. I don't know, I mean, we're so far out that who knows if things could change? So, I think keeping Italian Day on, keeping the carnival still scheduled, keeping the duop still scheduled, I would leave it on, who knows the end of July or what can happen, and we'll just keep monitoring things, but even if you go to Green, Green is only going to be 250 people, so it's still not going to allow for a major gathering. So, therefore, but any festival that was canceled in town was canceled under that direction of that organization, we had nothing to do with it. All the summer concerts, concerts are now canceled, so it's a shame.
Ralph?
Michael, what do you have?
I just wanted to mention with what you're, what you started and Greg brought up, that tomorrow night, there is a meeting for the Lions, which I'm associated with, and we're giving update on exactly an official statement of what they will be doing about Italian Day. Thank you, that's it.
All right, you want Mr. Devine to go first?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tony.
Okay. The first thing I want to say to the mayor is, just so you know for reference, when you include, when you say all black lives matter, and then you, and then you end it with all lives matter, it's the preference, I mean, the, the reason why if all black lives matter means all lives matter. That's, I mean, that's just, no, no, I'm just letting you know, that's one of the things that people have to understand about this movement, it's not, it's not like they're saying that all lives don't matter, only black lives matter, it's a way of saying if our lowest, the people who have been treated in the lowest form of any citizen in the United States matters, then everybody matters. So, it's kind of bringing everybody up to the same level. I just wanted to make that, just so you knew, you know, what it means by that statement. The first thing, the street sweeper, Mr. Dillon, is this going to, schedule going to change now that we're in yellow? Are we going to begin ticketing, are these cars supposed to be moving?
So, on my agenda, Tony, we're going to do it two weeks, warning.
Okay.
And we're going to start ticketing on June 25th, when I get to myself.
Okay.
Unless everybody's against it, I mean, it's up to everybody else, but right now, I think that a lot of people are back to work, a lot of things are happening, so there's no reason not to start the meter parking tickets on Mill Street, there's going to be warnings, that's going to start on June 15th, as per the manager, and sweeper tickets will start on June 25th, so there's going to be enough time to give warnings out.
Okay. Again, Mr. Dillon, trash cans around town, what are the scheduled pickups? Because I was walking around the baseball fields, the basketball courts have filled trash, and a couple of them have been, I mean, the one that I saw was busted pretty good, and then the ones that are around the train station, and I've had calls also for the Wharf, that I know that you were aware of, because that was taken care of already, but is there a schedule, picked up for each one of those?
Mondays and Fridays, we pick up all the trash cans.
Okay, so all around town?
All around. Monday and Friday, all right, good, that's fine.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ralph, you had to add more to it?
They're also, excuse me, picking up Saturdays and Sundays, I think, now that they have somebody coming in.
Okay.
I seen them picking them up, so that's why I was just going to add to that.
Right.
It's become a full-time job, because from what I understand, there's 50-some, 57 or 58 trash cans, and it's, people are using them not just for what we want them to use them for, you know, they're going down the river, they're buying McDonald's, or they're buying whatever, and they're just at it, just getting rid of their trash, they're just loading trash cans, and that's why every day, they're filling them up, so on the weekend, they're emptying them Friday, Saturday, and sometimes Sunday. So, that's something we need to discuss.
Okay. Is Leo back to work at the baseball fields?
Not on our payroll.
Okay. And then, the next question, are the rims going back up at the basketball courts?
Once the governor gives the green light on basketball courts.
Okay.
So, right now, there's no organized sports permitted under yellow.
Okay.
And if you want to go down the baseball field with your kid and just have a catch or hit something, that's fine, there could be no organized sports, and they specifically say basketball courts, because people are, you're playing five-on-five or whatever, and there's contact, and physical contact, which they don't want, and if you look at the book, or you, if you look it up, basically, they want everybody to have their own ball.
Yeah.
I mean, it's so insane for you to do this, I don't even know how it's going to happen.
Yeah, I saw them doing it like with the NBA, I'm only saying, because I went to, I was going down 13 to CVS, and those courts were packed, and I just was wondering.
You want to open them, I don't.
No, I don't want to open them, I'm just saying, you know, with the.
We're only, if the governor says, put the basketball rims back, we'll do it tomorrow.
No, 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 I was just saying it, I was just wondering, because I saw the ones in Croydon, I thought maybe, you know, with the yellow being, now that we're at the yellow stage, that it was that, but you telling me that makes sense to me. I would like to thank Kurt from Gilmore, giving me the aerial views of the tennis court area, to start, you know, talking about, you know, with everybody, about some ideas of what we could put there, in terms of, you know, basketball courts, and turf field, you know, that, the garden, skate park, just throwing some ideas out there that, you know, that residents and council people, we can all work together and just talk about some things to do on that plot, so I want to thank him for getting that to me. And then, I guess this is for Ralph. Ralph, any luck with Danny Pashulo's contact with Amtrak with that grass situation?
I haven't talked to him, I could call him.
I'll put a call.
Okay. Because we're still having that, like I said, I'm going to continue to bring that situation up, I think that Mr. Dillon is okay with Borough workers cutting the grass, if we give the okay, you know, as a council, because we have already went down that road with Amtrak, and we realize that it's a, you know, it's a big company that isn't going to follow whatever, you know, normal residents have to follow in regards to code enforcement, so they're not really worrying about getting tickets, or, you know, getting fined, because they're, you know, basically, they're not going to pay them, so if he has a contact that could help us, that would be, that would be great. The last thing I wanted to bring up, and I didn't bring it up when Greg brought it up, because, you know, it was part of my, it's going to be part of my, what I was reading just now, so, but, the march, the march was an amazing event, it was, I mean, it was great from all aspects, I think that Morris and Cora, and the whole organization that participated and ran and organized it, did a fantastic job, and I also want to thank Chief Henry, and here's the thing about it, like, I'm not a thank you guy to go overboard to thank everybody for everything they do, and that's part of their job, but I do, I do like to recognize when people go above and beyond, you know, their scope of their job, and I think that Chief Henry, along with, you know, the police officer on our force, also in the township, did a fantastic job of organizing, not just protecting Bristol Borough, but being proactive and protecting the protesters themselves and the surrounding areas, so Chief, I just want to let you know, you did a fantastic job, and I will say, the best, one of the best things that we did, and I've said this to you before, was when we decided to go outside to hire somebody, I think that, you know, like I did before, you were the best hire, and it's working out for us in Bristol Borough. With that said, more importantly than anything, I would like to thank the residents of the Borough Township and surrounding areas that came out to protest peacefully, I mean, it was, it was just a great event, man, it was just, it was just awesome to see everybody come together, and all those things, and again, it's always about rumors, and people are worried about this, worried about that, and you never know what's going to happen, you know what I mean, you never know what's going to happen, but I was glad to see that everybody in Bristol, you know, was able to do a wonderful job. But I would like to leave everybody with, with a little note, okay, because fighting racism doesn't just happen when the bright lights are on, right? When, when we're, when we're worrying about the spotlights on us, and we're walking, and we're doing these things for photo ops and for shows, because the real work happens when the lights aren't on, that's when the real work happens, so people who really care and want to fight racism, you do it when nobody's looking. To me, that's the key. And I'm going to say, for this council that sits here, and not just here, and even previously, this council that sits here, we have had many opportunities to change the way that we are looked at, or the way that we are looking out for our African-American residents, right? And those four things are very simple. When we first had, when I first got here eight years ago, there was a racist police, there was a racist picture down in the police department, okay, that everybody wanted to sit on their hands and act like no, and we had people that were upset with me, because I happened to be in the police department and saw a racist picture. We bring out the NAACP, and we still dismiss him when he comes out, and he says, yes, that is a racist picture, but we still wanted to dismiss it and act like it was no big deal, and we, and we tried to justify it, like, oh, it was, it was an officer who loved Tupac, and he loved dogs, and, you know, it was just, it was a bunch of BS, is what it was. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, by removing Mark Cora, who was the only African-American that we had on any board or commission, okay, the only one, and then, on top of it, he writes a letter to the council that says he's still interested in being part of that, being part of that committee, and that committee that he was on was an important committee, okay, it was the Civil Service Commission, which is, is the committee that is part of the hiring of police officers, the whole process. So, by this council voting to remove him, okay, is, is, to me, is a smack in the face, because it leads to think that as long as nobody's watching, we'll do whatever, but when those lights are on, what are you doing? Okay? The next thing is, we hire a convicted criminal as our code enforcement officer, right? That was bad enough, that was brought to your attention, everybody said, nah, and they hire him anyway, right? Then he goes back and we find out that he's using racist terms, and we know the words that he's using, they were, they were talked about in the back room, and you still bring them back anyway. So, these are the types of things that I'm talking about, so you need to start thinking about really what you want to, what you want to present to people, because I'm going to be the one who's going to let you know whether it's going to be in the light or in the dark. And another, and another, I mean, this just goes on and on, is, the last one is you have Dave Marucci, who was called a racist, you bring the NAACP in, you bring the NA, you have a nighttime vigil, candle lighting vigil, to call this man a racist, and then, years later, after he's, you guys thought he was a racist, you appoint him to the zoning board. So, it's either he's a racist, or you guys who hired him are racist, because you're okay with it. So, think about all those things, when you're voting and you think that's never going to come up, it's going to come up. So, I would just like to know, moving forward, that all the things that we talk about, and we, and we say the nice things about race, and we all work together in unity, that we really believe it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Can we respond to that?
Yeah, of course you can, go ahead, Greg, I would love to.
I'm not, I'm truly not wanting to fight with you.
No, but I would love to hear it.
Because I don't think you're going to.
Start then.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm here at all. I, I don't, I don't think everything you're saying is wrong at all.
Okay.
I just think that mistakes may have been made along the line, I think you're right, actually. But I think you need to be careful about how powerful your microscope is on us, and not on yourself, because certain people have been offended by things that you have said too. I'm not, we're talking.
About what just happened, is what we're talking about, right? So, we're talking about racism, all of them.
All I'm saying is this, we go out there and we walk side by side. We're in there, we're taking pictures, we're talking and saying all the right things. But previously, you had the opportunity to vote in a way that would be positive to the black community, and you didn't do it.
I think you're right about that.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. So where's, I don't understand what the problem is.
No, no problem.
Oh, okay.
My only, my only, my only thing is, word, you, there are things that, again, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to, because I don't think it's productive. But there, there are things that you have experienced, um, and/or you have offended people as well on the issue. So I'm just saying, I agree. So, so take that and turn the mirror around and meet it yourself as well. That's all I'm saying.
Can I just say one thing?
Really, that's all I wanted to say.
Um, I want to thank George Waldron today. There were some racist stickers on, on the path this morning, and he went right away and took them all down. And, um, I want to know from the chief, if somebody puts stickers on poles, do we have to allow that to happen, or can they get in trouble for that?
Can they get actually in trouble? Well, we can look if it's an ordinance violation, but if they put hatred up on the poles?
Yes.
First Amendment.
It's First Amendment. Well, people, people called me this, some people called me this morning, that walk, and they were very upset about it. But I want to thank, like I said, George, he went out immediately and, and took them all down. So, um, keep an eye. If you see them, take them down or call George.
Chief, I'm sorry for the delay. Do I have public comment for the next one? Okay.
Let me see if I can.
Sorry, that's the group, that's the group, his name was on those, that's the polls. But, but, no, I wanted her to see.
Oh, oh, here.
We can't actually, they are.
Okay, so what, what do we make more?
There's a public participation.
March wants to speak.
How you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
State your, state your name and everything for the record.
Brittany McLean. My address too?
Yes, please.
Twenty-one oh eight Wilson Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Brittany.
Um, I'm here on behalf of one of the organizers of the peace walk that we had this weekend. First, we wanted to say thank you to Chief Henry, uh, my man over there, Tony Devine, with a lot of passion in his voice, and Greg for coming to our council meeting. I think, uh, why I'm here today is just to represent and kind of change that narrative that we don't know what's going on, we're not aware. Today, uh, that protest was our first step in the right direction. Um, I think, I found a quote that says, uh, "True nobility is not being superior to somebody as to your former self," which is your belief systems and how you see people. And I think kind of what the walk represented is the trauma of being black to just walk in a room and feel judged, or that you're not enough, or you're inadequate. And this is 400 years of this, so if you don't think that dominance, that dominance, that need to control affects people, it does, right? So we know people in Bristol Borough had a fear-based narrative, right? Fear divides, separates, and people waste a lot of money putting up borders. They didn't need them. We knew our mission, we were, we were leading with compassion. So I think our goal is to start a community policing, to bridge the gap, to start to have conversations about what people are suffering with, understanding mental health and how it affects people, and just really work to have almost a community organizer. Either, either we're on the board, but we're at the table. It turns out we got some really good ideas, and we could change the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you.
You did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, you done, Tony?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, 21st century, uh, summer camp, they're going to stream the camp, and they want to submit a financial, uh, report to us explaining why the money is needed again. And we're going to have to get that report and explain, you know, because we give them money, want to make sure to, how this money's going to be used. So they're going to be getting that, that to us. The other thing is, as the governor went to yellow, he allowed outdoor dining for restaurants to start sitting outside. Well, a lot of our restaurants don't have the space or anything for outside seating, and in our ordinance, it says that you have to go to zoning, and things are as tough as they are right now for all these restaurant owners and cafes and ice cream and coffee shops, not only on Mill Street, but the entire town. To send them to zoning, and it's just, to me, it's ridiculous. So there was a temporary ordinance passed in, uh, what town?
Montgomery Town.
Montgomery Town, Ocean, Rhode Island. So they gave all these restaurants and all a 90-day stay to, uh, put tables out on the sidewalks and everything. Do you want to explain what they did so everybody knows?
Yes.
So, you know, when Governor Wolf passed his initial act, uh, in the Declaration of Emergency Act, he stated American, because of the emergencies, uh, that municipalities, the counties could, uh, kind of bypass procedures necessary. Uh, and, and this, this resolution that was passed, and, um, and I think it's supported by the Bucks County Planning Commission, says for 90 days that if you otherwise couldn't do the outside seating because you don't have the zoning permission, we're going to let you do it for the 90 days, as long as you follow the rules, which are pretty much the rules we have in effect. There has to be a pathway for, for pedestrians to pass wheelchairs. You can't, you know, block parking spaces, you can't block fire hydrants. If you're going to do it in your, on your property, you have to still make sure it's safe, and the cars parked one place and you sit one place. So there are protections in there. But what it does is it, it eliminates the need, like an under ordinance, you would have to go to zoning. You're talking about two or three months with advertising. By that time, the summer's over. So it's kind of an exercise of our emergency powers to say, we're going to, we're going to cut them a break. This, this resolution is not just for restaurants and outdoor seating, it's also for sales and merchandise. So this is really for any business. They could put tents up, they can't put up anything permanent. Put up stuff that's removable. So, uh, that is one thing that I guess is going to be considered. The other thing that's on your agenda is a permanent change to our, our ordinance, which instead of requiring you go to zoning board, is, right now, outdoor seating is permitted as a special exception, which means you go to zoning and approve, you meet all the requirements. If we make it permitted by right, you still have to go to the zoning officer and still meet all the requirements. We're not changing the requirements. You still have to have a pathway, you still have to meet those safety requirements. But instead of having to go to zoning, it's just like a fence permit. If you come in and meet the requirements, you get the permit. So that's permanent, that's not just during this, uh, this shutdown. We're trying to make it easier now that we kind of accept outdoor seating, see it's a good thing, uh, that, um, we're just going to make it easier for the restaurants in the whole town, not just Mill Street or, or the neighborhood commercial center. Just make it easier for them to get their permit, but still comply. So just, I want you to know there are two different things. One is a resolution that hopefully could be passed tonight, the other is just a vote to advertise for next one.
So why don't you explain what we want to advertise? And there's four points that we want to try to explain to everybody, what we're trying to do. And this is town-wide, this is in just Mill Street, it's the entire-
I had discussions with Jim, we're just looking to make it easier for, for these businesses. So, um, the four points are this, we're going to make outdoor seating for restaurants permitted by right in any district, so long as you go to the zoning officer and comply with, there's 10 requirements, you still have to comply with it, all right?
Wait a second, are you reading now just the 90-day one, or?
This is the permanent.
Okay.
Change it permanently. All right. So currently, it's a special exception only in the TC, the NC, and the HC one. HC one is 13. We're now going to allow it in all districts. You could have a restaurant, you could have outdoor seating, as long as you comply, okay? So we've expanded it to the whole town. The other thing is, some businesses, we know the property's invincible, you could have a 15-foot property. So we're allowing you, you can go to the adjacent properties, okay, as long as you get their permission, up to a total of 100 feet. So you can go 50 feet on one side, 50 feet on the other, 25 feet, 75 feet, or whatever. The idea is to give you a chance to expand that outdoor. And again, as long as the adjacent property owner says okay. We are still going to require continuous unobstructed pathway on the sidewalk, which allows for safe passes by pedestrians and wheelchairs. And, um, and that's it. So it's, it's not a big change, other than we're going to allow, allow you to get it more easily, and number two, it's the whole town.
And four is the tents.
Well, right, we're making it clear that on that side, if you're using the sidewalk or in your, in your parking lot, you could use awnings, tents, or umbrellas, but they have to be removable, especially on sidewalks. We don't want any permanent walls, no fences. It can't be permanent. It's got to be something that could be removed. And of course, the ordinance now says, and it's going to stay that way, I think it's from March 31st to, I forget when it was, October. It's, it's obviously seasonal, you're not going to do it in the winter. So that, that doesn't change.
All right, Tony?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So the, the first thing is, it has to be removable. Does that mean removable each night or removable at the end of the season?
At the end of the season.
Right, removable. We, we don't want people out there removing-
No, I'm asking them, only ask them.
But we don't want them permanent.
Okay. And then?
Bobby Seaman's an awning, because it would just go up.
The next question I have is for the other, other business that would be affected foot traffic, because they are small sidewalks. And this is something that I thought would be an idea now that we're in this pandemic and it is kind of, you know, we're seeing how, how crazy things are, is that why can't we, to help all of those businesses, especially on Mill Street and around the corner, is we block off Mill Street? So that way, you have the sidewalks free, and you can have, you know, the eateries, the tables and different things in the street, get rid of the parking, and just open the whole thing up.
You're talking about closing the street?
Yeah.
That's, that's-
Let me explain. So we had a Zoom, uh, call with PennDOT. Senator Tomlinson set it up to ask them, because we're watching all the other towns and things that are using, putting dining in the streets. And we could do it on any borough street that we want, but Spatt, Mill, and Rackliff are state highways, so we had to talk to them. PennDOT right now is not interested. They want a traffic study, they want a lot of things done, and the borough's not going to take that expense on right now. If the Mill Street business people want to do that and, and take care of the cost, that's fine. But it would be nice even to create, like, if it's three, four spots in front of each place, so they could put tables in the street, but there's a lot of liability involved with that. So that's why I think when the governor passed this outdoor dining, and we looked at other ordinance that are this temporary 90 days, which we're going to vote on tonight, and to send everybody to, you know, to change, Greg's the only one that went to zoning, I mean, for outdoor seating, you know, I, I think, I don't know if anybody else went.
I know I did.
I know you did. So it's really not fair to, to call, what's the coffee place?
Calm Waters.
Calm Waters, to go to zoning to put tables outside for coffee. So I think we need to change the ordinance. Greg?
And just, just to Tony's point, which I think is a really good idea, there are just other businesses that you might not consider too, that that could really hurt, like, uh, Digger Dogs. I haven't discussed this with Donna, she might be totally wrong, I don't know, but, uh, businesses like Digger Dogs that rely on pulling up, dropping their dogs off, you know, people that get their hair cut, that kind of stuff. I mean, it's something that, trust me, for my, you know, even my wife's business, probably better, but there are a lot of businesses, I think-
Right, and, and the other, the other flip side of that is, if we do it the other way, where you're just having the seating on the sidewalks, you know, they, there's, there's not a lot of room. So, I mean, to have, being wheelchair accessible and not blocking the, you know, the meters, you know, what are you going to get out there? Two, three tables, and then you're still going to have an issue, because, like, if I was in, if I was another business, that my customers had to park and then walk through a maze of, you know, people eating to get to whatever it is, Digger Dogs or whatever it is that I'm trying to get on Mill Street, you know, I would have an issue with that. I would like to be able to, you know, I, I want to see all those businesses succeed. So whatever they have to do in order to, you know, to make it happen for those people who are spending their own money trying to make Bristol Borough, I would like to, you know, to be kind of open to some more broad ideas moving forward.
Maybe what we should say is, anybody that has a restaurant or something that's not on a state highway could expand into the parking areas. I'd add to it, too.
What do you mean parking areas? On the street?
Yeah.
Well, how are you going to do that? Because now you're-
Same.
Because now you've got cars that could still go down it. That's no good.
Pardon me?
Because then you'll still have cars that could drive down Mill Street.
Nice.
What do you mean? We're not talking about Mill Street. Other areas.
Oh, oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Let's say that, what's the bar on the corner of, uh, Fillmore? Finney McGee's? They don't have anywhere. Well, maybe they want to set some tables outside and on the, a little bit in the street. Let them do it. Apollo Pizza, maybe they want to put some tables out front. I think we need to be lenient with the, with the rule. So let's, and I'm going to show this also to Steve from the, the Mill Street business, Mooney, and see if they want to add or change anything, and I'll have this to everybody to be voting on for next month. So does anybody else want to add anything to this or not add anything?
I just want to say, uh, Digger Dog Donna really gets upset when they try to shut the street down, because-
We're not going to shut it down.
She's got 20-some dogs in there, and she said-
Well, right now, I think what Jim did-
People are just furious that they have to-
What Jim did on a temporary basis, he gave all the restaurants, I think they're blocking off, Greg, you could tell me if I'm wrong, a couple meters for pickup, for the takeout, because people were parked, and people couldn't park.
So, no, actually, that, so Craig Whitaker was a big advocate of that, and he talked to every restaurant, and everybody said, yes, but we just never really got the ball rolling, because that's when the quarantine started and everybody was just running around with their head chopped off. So, no, actually, I, I blocked off a meter for a night when I put those tents up, which I had some signs left over for first Friday. I probably shouldn't have done that, because I forgot I left them there, so I, I apologize for that, that was on me. But no, we are not blocking off-
I think we're all in favor of doing what we have to do to help businesses.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Anything we can.
I don't think I have anything else, so, Jim, what do you have? Well, I gotta be missing something. No, no, the only, the only thing I have, uh, is this requirement that I have to more or less read into the permanent minutes of the, the meeting tonight. If you remember annually, we usually have, uh, Samantha come in from Gilmore and talk about the environment and whatsoever's needed. So if you don't mind, I'll just read this so that it'll, our requirements. Yep. Bristol Borough's municipal separate storm sewer system permit was approved on June 20th, 2018. And the borough has until June 2023 to complete the requirements of the current permit. These requirements are mandated by DEP for every municipality in Pennsylvania, and the borough remains in compliance with the current requirements of the permit. As a part of the permit, the borough is required to construct a project to help reduce stormwater pollution, for which the borough proposed the construction of a rain garden in the far corner of the Otter Street Fields. The borough is currently seeking grant funding for this project and will begin engineering once grant funding is obtained. So that's, we'll put that into the minutes, and that will meet our requirement for this year. Let's see. Billy, you have anything?
Nothing.
You got it? You have anything else? All right, so, uh, anybody out there again for public participation before we start? No?
I don't see anybody.
Public participation again. I don't even have an agenda, Jim, so. All right, so, is everybody ready? Number three on the agenda.
Mr. President, you have to bear with me. I'd like to make, make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for May 11th to 20, I mean, 2020, accept treasurer's report for April 2020, to accept police and DJ's report for May 2020, to accept fire chief's report for May 2020, to accept the inspection department report for May 2020, and to accept the public works department report for May 2020.
By Mr. President, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize an ordinance amending the responsible contract ordinance.
By the second. Second by Ms. Cullen, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to authorize advertising ordinance to amend section 270 dot 320 dot seven dot M, I think, of the zoning ordinance, outdoor eating accessory to food service.
Second by Michael, questions or comments?
I, I'm going to recuse myself in this, though my wife owns the restaurant, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the ratification of the declaration of a disaster emergency.
Michael, questions or comments? Tony?
Yeah, what is, this what we, what's this disaster emergency? Was this something we talked about earlier?
The 90-day.
Oh, that's the 90-day one?
No, no, that was in the, that was in the packet. This is what we had to adopt when the pandemic first started, so I'm sorry.
Sorry. Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number seven. One about the 90 days.
Okay, so, about the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. You can do it if you want to.
I just know you don't think it's possible.
I don't know if you can, right?
Oh, that's, I'm sorry.
Establishing guidelines.
Oh, okay, no, I will say this one, I'm sorry.
Resolution of Council of Bristol Borough, Bucks County, establishing guidelines and policy for outdoor sales and merchandise and/or outdoor dining for existing businesses in the borough during the coronavirus pandemic. Do you want me to read more?
No.
Okay.
Second by Michael, any questions or comments?
Mr. Swire, is this an ordinance that I should recuse myself and rethink if it's going to mistake?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention. I get a motion to adjourn.
Post it to.
Second by Dave.
Chair. Chair. Bill, can I look at this one?